Are there any announcements?
No, there's no announcements.
Good, rolling along here. Public to be heard on agenda items? Okay. Committee report, student report?
Yup, okay. Good evening, everyone. With the return of school comes the return of clubs and after-school activities. Many students, grades nine to twelve, are interested in becoming part of the yearbook finance staff. You will need to complete an application by October 3rd, even if you were part of the finance staff last year. Applications are available outside room 401 of the ninth grade center and in the 10th grade house office of the 10-12 center. The ultimate Frisbee club is beginning soon as well. The first meeting will be Tuesday, September 26th at 2:30 PM in room 105 of the 10-12 center. Students should have a ride home, no later than 4:00 PM. The cultural awareness club is having their annual membership meeting Tuesday, September 26th in room 258 of the 10-12 center. The Ram Buddies Club will have an informational meeting and election of officers on Wednesday, September 20th, after school in room 186 of the 10-12 center. Attention, parents, you are invited to visit the high school 10-12 center and your students, teachers tomorrow, Tuesday, September 19th for open house night. Plan to arrive at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Curriculum technology?
Next week.
Finance? Property be next week. Dr. Roach?
Hello? Fantastic. That was quick. Yes, this is fantastic. Good news to share from PDE. PDE staff conducted a thorough view of our special education programs and records by looking at our compliance indicators and the state performance plan, our submission of the required data to PDE, and then any corrections we had to make, as well as other indicators to meet the requirements of IDEA. I'm pleased to share that PDE has given Springfield the highest ranking possible of meeting the requirement for our participation in IDEA. They commend Springfield for their hard work in delivering high-quality programs to our students with disabilities. So congratulations go out to all of our classroom teachers, including our special education teachers, our instructional assistants, and our administration for meeting the criteria for IDEA from PDE. And also, just a quick enrollment update, as we use our 10-day enrollment figures that Springfield has, population has increased by 73 students from when we left off in June to where we are today, breaking the 8,000 mark with a current enrollment of 8,007 students. So in future meetings, I can provide more in-depth, but I think that 8,000 number is one that's been treading there that we've now smashed through up to 8,007. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. DiBello, you ready? Mr. Fitzgerald, go ahead.
I have no report this evening.
Thanks a lot. He needed a little more time. Can you make something up?
I could've, but...
Go ahead.
Always have a backup. Finance meeting met. September 12th at the district office. We start the year off, the new school year off. I should say, looking at our monthly reports, we, it's only two months in, so we're optimistic, but right now, everything as per budgeted is on schedule and we're tracking well, even though we're, like I said, a couple months in. So we'll keep close on that. We did, there is the audit going on from last year's, and we anticipate by October, November timeframe that we should be able to close that out and have another successful year under Mr. Fink's guidance and along with his whole business staff. There is initiative underway to look at electronic time cards. Mr. Fink is discussing that with administration, and they're looking at different systems, and most importantly, whatever system they choose, we'll have to integrate in with our existing Skyworks system. I did mention in the audit update, we looked at a five-year model review, forecast model review, knowing that we have a drop-off coming in seven years related to our debt service. Mr. Fink has actually built the five-year model, or the forecast model, out to seven years, bringing us up to that debt drop-off. We are cautious, ultimately cautious about what's going on in Harrisburg. We, I'm gonna flip over here, let me see. Because related to that, we did discuss what's currently going on in Harrisburg. There is roughly a $2.2 billion deficit with the budget for this year, the '17-'18 budget. There was a House Bill 453 that was put forward, and there seems to have been some momentum related to that in the House. Basically, it's their, what they would call their revenue bill. It's an interesting approach, and the reason I'm bringing this up because what we talked about finance was we need to be, pay particular attention to what's gonna go on this year and next year as far as educational spending. Roughly one-third of the state's budget is education. Knowing that they're at least $2 billion, and that number seems to be slightly low compared to what others have reported, right now, it's safe to say that the state is somewhere between $2 and $3 billion short on their revenue projections for the '17-'18 budget. Basically, they're looking at making up the money. They're getting very creative and using what you would say you'd never do in any type of balancing of a budget, but they're basically going to borrow money from all the different funds and reserves that they already have in place. They're also looking at, and this, I'm not quite following it, but maybe Jim, you could look at it at some point, but they're looking at taking monies from the tobacco settlement fund and a reduction of other fund transfers to try to make up the shortfall. There's, they're also talking about the state would receive monies from annuity, liquidation from the state tobacco settlement fund. The two state pension systems, you'll love this, are targeted as the primary investors into the purchase of the settlement of the revenues. Now, granted, those two state funds are underfunded, so it's just a way of moving money around. They're also taking or planning on getting money from expanded gambling bill that hasn't been passed yet. And there's other funds that they're looking at taking money out of. As we've talked about many times at this board table, you don't try to balance a bunch with one-time reserve funds, transfers, or whatever, because you need to make it up the following year. So basically, what our state is doing is they're kicking the can down the road. So if they're able to even come close with their making up the $2 billion to $2 to $3 billion shortfall this year, which it doesn't appear to be, that money's gonna ripple into next year. The reason I mentioned, we're talking about this at finance is because at some point down the road, somewhere along the line, there's gonna be cuts made, or the state's gonna have to raise taxes, one or the other. So knowing that we get roughly about 17%, 18% of our budget, or maybe a little bit more from the state, we're gonna have to watch that very closely this year and next year and see what decisions are made. And the other thing is, Ms. Zosowski came to the finance meeting and said that the policy meeting, uh, policy committee is in the process of looking at and revising the use of facilities policy. In fact, they've been working on that for some time now, and they would like to get information from the finance office as well as the finance committee, and she will be back for the October meeting to discuss further. And that concludes my report.
So just to piggyback on that a little bit, we have been working on the use of facilities policy to really bring it up to date and to make sure that it's equitable and fair for everyone that does use the facilities. It was brought to my attention by a number of parents that one of our board members, Mr. Dunner, had gone to the Springfield Youth Athletic League meeting and put it out there that we are going to increase costs drastically. That's not what we're trying to do, so I just wanna set that record straight that we are looking to revise the policy to make it fair and equitable for everybody who uses the facilities. I did go to both property and finance meetings this month and ask for their input in looking at what has worked with use of facilities and what changes they would like to see us include in that policy. So I've asked for feedback so that we can, as a policy group, take all of that into consideration and then make the best possible recommendations to the full board with full disclosure of everything that's going on. And should there be any change to any fee structure, that would absolutely be communicated to all groups well in advance of those changes. So again, we're looking to make this a positive revision of the policy, and if anyone has any questions, you're welcome to attend policy meetings to find out for yourself what's going on with that. And once we do have a more full understanding of the changes that are needed and how we can implement those, there will be a full presentation to the board on the use of facilities. Thank you.
Yeah, I went to that, to the last meeting for the youth basketball to let them know that there is consideration in the policy committee of significantly increasing the fees that the youth sports pay, which would, based on the schedule that was provided, would be probably a $30,000 or $40,000 a year increase for what they pay today. And I want them to know that's something that's being discussed because it affects them significantly.
Right, I'm just not sure why it took that route so quickly if we're just in the phase of still revising and discussing and coming up with an equitable plan. We obviously know that there are certain groups that have a very intense, or I, they use the facilities a whole lot. And we have to take into consideration everything that's going on, how their use is. We're not trying to slight anyone in any way. We're trying to just improve the policy to make it applicable to the people that are using the facilities. So I just think it was premature. There has not been a full presentation to the board. In fact, we're still in the fact-finding stages, and that is why I went to property and finance both and asked to be on the agenda for both of those meetings in the next month to further discuss what it is we're discussing in policy and also to get their feedback and making more integrated decisions.
I wanted to give them a chance to provide input before this thing gets to the board level, was in committee, so that they can give their input. Because I think getting their input at committees is important, and I know that at least one of them had planned to attend the last policy meeting, which was canceled. So I want them to know that these are serious discussions that would significantly increase the charges that they would pay for using the facilities for programs that affect well over 1,000 Springfield students.
I do hear what you're saying on that. I just, I think it was too early. I think it was too early. I think that there are still discussions going on, and everyone knows you can attend the policy meeting, you can attend, they're open to do that. So I think maybe saying, hey, you know, this discussion, this policy's being discussed, it might be in your best interest to come, might have been enough to go to the point of saying that these fees are gonna be drastically increased to the point where there were people at the meeting who said to me they're not sure they want their children to participate now because they felt like it was becoming very political. That discourages me. That makes me sad for those children that might have had that opportunity to participate. So I just think it was a little premature.
So we should wait until it's presented to the board as a proposal before they get input? Not in the beginning stages? Because this has progressed for many months. It didn't just happen in one month. The discussion, and I think it's about time that they know that's going on because it infects them.
And as I said, I feel like it would have been okay to say, hey, you know, they're reviewing the use of facilities policy. You may wanna come to those meetings to see how that's gonna impact you. But I don't think that it's something that we need to make an arbitrary issue that children may not participate in the activity because they feel, or the parents feel, that it's becoming a political issue.
Well, I don't think that that's shared, that opinion's shared by many people. You may be talking about one person, that opinion, but this has nothing to do with politics. This has to do with fees that, in fact, an organization that provides a significant benefit to Springfield students at minimal cost to the district.
Just to clarify, the October agenda will not have this as a working agenda item because we've got several other items. So in October, as you bring this discussion to property and finance, we had not planned on having a discussion on 707 on our working agenda. So I don't want people to show up thinking we're talking about that. Strategically, that agenda is not having that because these discussions are taking place the next day after that to get feedback.
Oh, I hear what you're, yes, at the October, at the October meeting.
Correct, much like the last one.
I'm sorry, you're right. We're still gathering, I should get that information, further information, at the property and finance committee the following night.
It has dominated our agenda for so many months. There's things that keep getting pushed down.
Yes, that we need to address in October.
So the 707, the specific policy that you guys are talking about will not be on there for an active discussion this, on October. Should be in November when you bring the feedback back to the group.
Mr. Sarisi, there is two other things I noticed on my phone I forgot to mention. But I did wanna comment on the statement that it's minimal impact or minimal cost to the district. I think that that's a misnomer as far as what the belief is, and that's part of what the information is in the fact-finding because it was also discussed at the property meeting as well. And I think that there's tremendous cost that this district currently absorbs for the use of all these facilities all the time. And I think that's what's important, that's what's being broken down. And that's the information that will be very useful to be presented and discussed at policy and eventually to board. The other, the other two things was related to the budget. There has, really hasn't been much talk related to property tax reform, but there is, and we did mention this at finance also, is that there is going to be a question on the ballot in November about expanding the homestead tax, or not tax, I'm sorry, the homestead rebate. So I think that, and I think the way it's gonna be worded, it's gonna kinda mislead people. But, you know, homestead is currently funded, the homestead rebate is currently funded by the state, which they really don't fund it to the full levels. In the way it was written originally, it was basically funded at 50%, and now they're talking about changing to 100%. One would make a determination that what they're possibly doing is setting up for something in the future as far as trying to do property tax reform or some type of property tax reform through the homestead rebate, but I think that's still within the crystal ball. But there will be, because from my understanding, when you're gonna have a ballot question, it has to go, get approved by two sessions, and it recently got approved for a second time, so it will be on the ballot in November. And the other thing is, is with the signing of the teacher contract, there is a deficit that is in this year's budget. We feel from a finance perspective that we may be able to weather through that, but part of the reports moving forward is we're gonna look at the amount that we're short, and we're going to see over the next couple months how we could lessen that burden.
Thank you. I was gonna comment regarding the property tax. Also, is that one of the explanations for what's happening is that it'll be a shift. One of the things that's out there is it's a shift from property tax to personal income tax. And if we base the funding of public education on personal income tax, those years of the economy tanks, we won't have money to run the districts anymore. So it's one of these never-ending cycles that we've seen forever where the legislator branch of the government, and, you know, the government in general in Pennsylvania doesn't wanna do the right thing and fund education to keep borrowing and taking away from education to make it into a private industry, to privatize it and take it out of public education. I think that, I've said this over and over again, a lot of us have said this, we as board members and as a community need to all be on the same page and need to fight together to tell the legislators this is the wrong way to go. This is not the way we wanna fund public education. They would destroy the system, again, if we base this on a personal income tax rather than the way it is. And I'm not thrilled, I mean, we all pay property tax in this room if you own property, and nobody's happy about paying property tax, I'm sure. Nobody wants to pay any tax, whether it be property tax or personal income tax. But the one thing we've seen in Springfield is a consistency and a great district, and we've worked hard to be where we are today, not to have the state come in and destroy it. And like Mr. DiBello alluded to, even in our state budget, that they're trying to balance the budget, they're stealing from one account to put into another, and the can is so bent out of shape, I don't even know if you can kick it down the lane anymore because it's pretty much destroyed. So there is no solution in Harrisburg to balance out this budget. And at the end of the day, education will probably have money taken away from it once again, and we'll be back to where we were. So for those of you who are here, those of you who are watching, those of you who may read about this, reach out to your legislators and let them know that we don't stand for education being, you know, kicked down the lane once again. You need to fund what's right. I did find the property committee report. Mr. DiBello gave me plenty of time to find it on my phone. So one thing that we'll see on tonight's agenda about the high school expansion, Crabtree is working. They're about 50% to 75% completed with the designs, the development documents, and we will see that go out to bid January, February, Mr. Cooper? Is that correct?
Yes, basically, it's supposed to be February.
February, okay. There'll be the high school auditorium lighting. We were trying to get that in earlier to change it out. It's a new system that will go for all the lighting in the auditorium, not the stage, just the auditorium itself. And that will happen basically between the Christmas break, the holiday break. Royers Ford, we talked a little about some with Royers Ford parking of a Providence baseball field. We also were part of a program with PICO for a long time with a rebate on our buildings for taking a building offline in the summer. But because we've done such a great job with our buildings being dark and only working a couple buildings in the summer, the rebate, I think our first year was over $100,000, right? Like $150,000 or what was it?
Hundred and some thousand, now we're down to about 14, 12.
Yeah, it says 12,000. And we think the program's gonna disappear. Right, and also the LEDs are all in, so our load has really come down a lot. There's some work that's gonna be done on the ninth grade roof. Brook will have some new drapes put into the music room and the auditorium. They're a little bit old. There's a fire panel that needs to be replaced at Brook. There was conversations regarding the conference room and a registration area at the district office, so we're gonna look more into that. And some tree removal here at the high school. And then the conversation that Colleen brought up regarding the fees and structure program. The one thing regarding that I think that needs to be made clear is that we don't have a clear picture yet on what it actually costs for our employees, for our use, for every aspect. I mean, people say, well, you have a custodian in the building anyway, so what difference does it make? There's a fee for that custodian in the building. And how many of that custodian's hours are now being put forth to this other area? And what about the lights? And what about the use in the restroom? And what about the use on facilities itself? So until we have a clear picture, we have no idea what the fee structure will be. And that could take months until that happens. And again, it won't happen and go into effect until next year because we're already into this year. So I guess this could be, you know, the announcement to all groups just to keep an eye on this and see where we're going with it. But we really need to see a clear picture. We're not looking to make money off of anybody. We're looking to break even and stay whole. So I think that's important to know.
And just to add to that, too, we're specifically looking at tangible costs. There are some things that we won't be able to measure or quantify or anything like that, but the tangible cost that the district is absorbing, we have to look at that. Is that something we wanna continue to do? Or is that something that the groups that are using the facilities need to take on? And that's really part of this whole fact-finding mission on that.
I'd hate to see that increase in fees reduced the number of kids that participate in these intramural sports. These sports provide the same benefits that we have for extracurricular activities, and these are, kids are either too young to participate in that stuff or kids that aren't good enough to make teams. So it gives them the same opportunities for team building and leadership skills and all kinds of good things that come out of participating in sports. And the more we increase those fees on those organizations, they have to either raise the fees or cut back on how many can participate and how many events they have.
I really, I think, though, that they are gonna have to budget as much as we have to budget. And I would much rather, you know, see that it's, we don't, nobody wants anybody excluded. But I also don't want anybody excluded because there's a bad connotation about this. This isn't a bad thing. This is just leveling the playing field a little bit and saying, hey, you know what? We're all gonna have to do a better job of sharpening our pencils, as Mr. Fink says so many times, to budget well, to make sure the bills are paid, and make sure that as many kids as possible can participate in these sports. I'm a complete advocate for these. All of my girls participate. But at the same time, you have to find a balance.
What do you mean by level the playing field? I don't understand.
Well, I think that, I agree with what you said. I don't wanna see anyone be pushed out. It is all of our district. I think one thing we're all missing is, we may come back with this report and say our fees are too high. I mean, we have no idea because we have never really driven down, I know, it's probably not likely. I saw you shaking your head over there. But we don't know really down to what it's really costing us to have this facility rented. And that doesn't mean we have to go to the extreme of what it's really costing us. That's the other question here is, if it's 100% Springfield kids, it's our community, it's this fee. If it's an outside rental, now the fee structure goes up to this one. But at least then we can come back to the board and say, okay, here's what it's costing us, here's what we're charging, here's what we're eating. And we hear a lot about, you know, our senior citizens and our residents and the 70% of people who live in this district who don't have children in the district and what they're paying for. So this is going back and saying, here's what it's costing us to run that activity. So when someone comes and says, wow, we can't do this, even at the current structure that we have, well, we're losing money on this and we can't go any further than XYZ. And again, I don't know what we're gonna come back with. All I'm saying is, let's not jump the gun and say, fees are gonna go up $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. I don't wanna see their fee go up. I mean, you know, for years, we participated in that, too, and I know how it is to be part of that and see our kids participate in it. So I would say, stay as involved as you can in this, and I would hope in the next two months that we'd have a fee structure.
Yeah, all I simply did was just tell them the discussions are going on so they can have input. I think it's better to have their input early rather than at the end. And the way it's progressing is that they would not have been informed, would not have known about this till the end, and that's the wrong time.
Well, that, I don't, I don't know, I don't agree with that statement. I mean, here we go again. It's like we're starting a nonsense all over again. You already said, and I know for a fact, you already told them that they're gonna, their fee, they're gonna go up $30,000, $40,000. I mean...
I didn't tell them any number.
Well, that's the numbers that came back, and you just said it here earlier.
I just said here, I didn't mention that at the meeting, and I simply said that there are charges and there is a real schedule that was...
There is no real schedule.
Let me finish.
You cut me off.
There is a real schedule that is, presented at the property, at the policy committee that has real numbers on it, and those real numbers add up to a lot of money. This isn't something I concocted. So I simply wanted to tell those organizations that their finances are, that there's discussions that would significantly impact what it costs them to run their programs. And that's all. And I think that's being open and honest and not, not having this in a committee where nobody knows about it really until the end. So I simply told them what is going on so they can have input. And if you think there's something wrong with that, that's your prerogative.
I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it. What I'm saying is that would, the prudent thing would have been is this, because you were at the property meeting, you could've suggested to Colleen and say, look, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be at the next meeting, I'm gonna mention that there's changes going on. They're already under the belief that their costs are gonna go up significantly. When I heard about it, I was like, we haven't even discussed it yet because they're in a fact-finding. It's all about the message that was delivered. So, and that's just one group that uses these facilities regularly. And I think that the work that the policy committee is doing in just getting the information, and so there was a draft salary sched, uh, yeah, salary schedule, what have we been talking about? The draft fee schedule put in place. I mean, again, it wasn't, you know, it's unfortunate that, and this is why I say continuously, for the last couple of years at these committee meetings, anything that's discussed at the table, people are taking it and are running out with it, and it's not even close to even halfway baked. And maybe that fee schedule's gonna change in three weeks. Maybe it's gonna go down, maybe it's gonna go up. Maybe when she gets the information, gets more information from finance or when she gets more information from property. There's significant changes are gonna be made to the policy before. And how do you know that they, the policy committee wasn't planning on bringing something to the groups and saying, look, this is where we're at, this is what we have, we want your input?
Well, I've gone to the last several meetings, and there was no discussion of that, so I'm simply, I'm simply warning them. So it seems like you have a problem with informing the public of information.
No, I have a problem with putting misinformation out.
There's no misinformation, I told them fact.
So here's what I ask.
You weren't at the policy meetings, you don't know what the facts are, so you shouldn't be saying what the facts are.
The only thing, though, and I don't want to get between this, but we've got to come to an end here, this is what I'd ask any board member. I'm all for everybody knowing everything, so when you're at the committee meeting, suggest, let's send out an email or give notification to all groups that there's a conversation going on, so everyone receives the same information. At the same time, we'd like them to start coming to the meetings, we'd like to get their input. That would have taken care of the whole issue. So let's just remember that when we're at these meetings, there's nothing wrong with them knowing this. There's nothing wrong with all of them knowing, but let's, everybody knows it who may be affected by it, the churches, whatever rentals are, whatever groups use our buildings. From this point forward, and I'll ask the administration, let them all know that we're looking at our fees, if they want to come to the meetings, when the meetings will be, that's, that's the fairest way to do this. All right, I'm going to move on now. So you have no report, right, Mark? You've got nothing? All right, I thought maybe you found something, too. Minutes A and B, is there any questions? Personnel, we had A through F. Finance, we have A through E. Make sure there's a lot of Es, 12 Es. Property, we have A and B.
You have a question on B. Can I get some explanation on what this 108,900 dollars is that's on the agenda?
Mr. Cooper?
Yes, in their contract under 11.1, the fee was based in the beginning during the schematic design, at the low number they brought to us, that was at the sketch that we had the very beginning, it didn't count the size. And at the end of that design, at the end of schematics, which we have hit, it says the fee will be adjusted to the amount between the owner and the architect at a percent of 7 percent. So the 7 percent at that time now is 10 all-in, construction costs are 8 million 2, the low number we started out was 7 million 7 some odd numbers, and that gives us roughly 108,000 more to make this building come in, that which encounters the corridor fee that we have to do up to bidding. It does not include the construction documents, because we did not approve that yet to move forward. This is to bring the bids in, give them to us, and then we have to vote if you want to move the project or not move with the project. And then you would then, at that time, pay for construction, which is 10 percent of what their architectural fee would be. So this is as per the contract, and this comes up with the number, because at first we had that, we sat down with everybody through the schematic designs, and we came up with the size and the square footage, what was needed for what they requested and what everybody else wanted. And that's when we had the big town hall meeting pretty much also, and that's when we came up with the fee not to exceed 10 million for bids 1 and 2, and then the corridor bid was put on there at 1.8. So that's where the fee's now. So to make it whole so we can have the architect finish this and bring it to the, for us for bids, their fee has been adjusted as per the contract under 11.1 to, for 108, 108,000 more money on top of what we, we have with them now.
Now, Mr. Cooper, does this take us all the way through the bidding documents, then?
Pardon me?
Does this take us all the way through bid?
All the way through bid. Do we have, they'll bring us up, do they bring it here in public? We give the low number of the bidder, they go through the bids, make sure they separate them, which ones are legit, which ones qualify bids. They bring them here, they give us the final numbers, and then we vote on move forward. The project is basically, everything's done except for the actual construction phase itself.
Second question. This is normal process whenever you're doing a project, to go through this process with, I'm not talking about the approvals along every step, but this is something that happens behind the scenes?
Most time, yes. Most of the time when we do, in this district here, probably over the 14-some projects I did, majority of projects that we do, we actually set an architect or fee in the beginning, and then we say at bid time, their fee will be adjusted by an X amount of percent, like 7 percent of what the actual bids would be at that time. That way we're paying for exactly what it is. This time, because of how it went through, it's on their estimate of what it is.
Okay, so what does this bring? The total fees that will pay them up till when we have the bids?
That includes the corridor and, and the alternate.
And, and, go ahead.
It, it says it's coming out of the general fund. Was that the plan all along, to take it out of general fund or take it out of capital reserve?
We can't take it out of the capital reserve until it's an actual project, until the board votes to move forward, you know, when the bids come in, then it'll be a project, and then those funds will decide whether we borrow or how we pay it at that time.
Okay, so, so when we did the budget for this year, was that architect fee in the budget, or is it, assuming it would come out of capital reserve?
No, it was built into the budget.
So the total 689,000?
Well, some of it we, we paid last year as well, as we, you know, been moving forward with it.
And, Mr. Cooper, also, once this part of the process is complete or paid for, is it at that point that we then own these plans, and if we did stop at that point, we would still have these to go back to in the future? Are we at that point or, or not yet?
We are at a point when we have these, the drawings will be done, they're ready for bid, but if we use that architect, we're okay. If we want to go shop another architect, another architect's always going to want to review the drawings and make sure they are right to them, and sure that Crabtree would want a waiver saying they would not be held responsible for that. So you kind of own the paper, but you don't own basically, you know, you can't say, I'm going to bill it per done plan, something's wrong, going to go back at that architect.
I, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but this project should have been done five or six years ago, once again. Every meeting, we're talking about the same thing over and over and over. I respect anyone that wants to vote no or question it, but enough is enough. I mean, I've sat at this table, and we've done so many projects in this district that cost so much more money than Mr. Cooper's been more than capable of handling, that we never questioned on. We have wasted so many board meetings on this project. We did a three-hour town hall meeting, we explained everything top to bottom. The only thing that changed was the corridor from the original presentation that we gave here at the table. I mean, if this board doesn't move forward with this project at this point, I don't know what to say. And again, I, I have no, nothing in this game, my kid is out of this building, but it's time that this, this project just goes and moves forward, is done, is over with. I trust Mr. Cooper is doing the right thing with these, Mr. Fink, Mr. Fitzgerald, there's nothing different on this project than any other project, other than we're approving every time a $3 bill comes in, rather than do it all like every other way. So I just want the public to be aware that there's nothing different with this project than, again, any other one, and I think the last project we did was Evans Elementary, was probably the last big project, right? Oh, the high school, yeah, I wasn't here for that one. And the Western Center addition went on at the same time. Again, I, I just hope that this board and its future vote in January, I won't have a say in that, but you just moved this project through, it's something that's needed. We heard tonight we're over 8,000 kids. We're going to be over 9,000 kids soon enough, and I guarantee you, within five to six years, they're going to be sitting at this table to think, what building do we build next? So this expansion to this building is not like it's something that's a luxury, it's a necessity. More than anything, that hallway is a necessity that should happen ASAP, but hopefully with this, it'll go into construction come June of this year. All right, conferences and workshops, we had A to H. Any questions? Other business, A to D. I'm going to comment on other business, I'm sure Mr. DiBello may want to jump in on this. We don't know any of these people who have been elected to PSBA, and that's fine. And we've sat at this table for a long time and said, do we even still participate in PSBA? But all I'm going to say is, if a message gets through to these people, they need to know that they need to be advocates for the districts, and we need to know that their voice is being heard. I don't want to hear that they wrote a letter or they spoke to a state representative. I want to know they've taken these issues on head-on, because some of these issues that we're facing can be the demise of public education, and they're supposed to be our group that lobbies for that, with us. So I would hope these people know that to become friends with the state reps and the senators and the governor is great, but make sure that they know what they're there for, and not just to be buddies with them. Board comment? Anybody have a comment?
Yeah, I read an article about privacy issues with student data. Because of the use of a lot more devices and a lot of freeware, open source software programs being used, and companies selling programs that do various things, that there's an issue with collection of data that's student data, and sometimes maybe even personal information. And I just want to know what we do, what the district does when software is used or purchased, and those kinds of services are purchased, what protections we have in our agreements, particularly if it's freeware, that protects the, the student data, the privacy information, so that that data on, on any student isn't being sold or used without the district's knowledge and consent.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Depending on the vendor, and this is an issue for many districts, that is, those are provisions that are, that are tantamount to what the agreement needs to look like in terms of how they possess it when we're in, in contract with those vendors, how it is returned to us, how they can use it during the term of service, and then afterwards. So I, I think many districts, Springfield included, are cognizant of that, especially for FERPA issues, HIPAA issues and the like, that, that, how that data, whether it be in the aggregate or individualized, is used, how ultimately is used during and after, yes, they're very much aware of it.
And some of the things I'm concerned with is that there's a lot of click-through agreements that, I mean, teachers aren't, they're not contract experts, and they go to use software, and there, there can be agreements that are click-through that, that give permission to use data, and they probably don't even, are not even aware of this kind of thing.
Well, I would certainly...
And that maybe we should have some training, and that, so that people know that simply clicking sometimes introduces issues that, I mean, most people, when they go to any website, they'll click, they agree, without even reading the numerous pages of fine print. And there could be, in some of those agreements, that allow them to use certain data.
Well, and that is an issue, and some teachers that have, you know, enter into some sort of program for their students, some stop and then send it up the chain to say, hey, do we need to take a look at it? Others just click through. I would caution clicking through and, and having it looked at either by the administration or my office, just to make sure that we're, we're good to go with that. And so that's something that I think each teacher would have to, to, to recognize if they click through.
I'd even recommend that a future in-service...
If I could just make a statement first, because there is...
Let me finish what I'm saying. I would recommend a future in-service, have a, have a seminar or a session on that very topic, so that it's, teachers know.
There already is a process in place for those, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but anytime that a teacher is using a new website or a new application, there is a process that they have to go through, including your group, before they have access to that.
Yes, any application or program has to go through curriculum and myself before it gets approved to any teacher.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that we should look at having that kind of session, because the teachers may go on, or any minute, anybody works in the district may go onto a site, thinking it's pretty innocuous to, to use that site and click this agreement. That doesn't even come to that. So I think it's worth looking at it as a potential topic for an in-service, because things happen. It's not just education, it's the private sector as well, there's the same issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Gooden, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to take a minute to, last month, we approved a, a contract with our professional staff, and just want to take a minute to share my appreciation on the behalf of the administrative team for the hard work that went into play on both sides, for the association of folks who negotiated that and approved it, and also for the board members who worked together behind the scenes to make that contract possible. Certainly, kudos to the closest administrators on my team that worked with it, Mrs. Leece and, and Mr. Fink, as well as the negotiating team for the association who came out numerous times and met. So I certainly am appreciative of that, and as, as our administrators are, and I'm sure our public is as well, especially in light of a neighboring district that we are near, that they're not being quite as successful as we were, and there, and there are some issues over in that district, so just thought it was appropriate to thank all parties concerned.
Thank you. Public to be heard?
Hi, I'm Zach Glory, and I'm a resident of Limerick Township, but I'm actually speaking as the association president this evening. And I really just want to echo what Dr. Gooden had said. We're really happy that we were able to work together to end up getting a fair contract for everyone involved. Wanted to thank both sides, the association's negotiation team, as well as the personnel committee. It was a long road, but I, I do feel in the end that we got a good result for everyone and a fair contract for all. So thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? One thing I forgot to say is, we see that tonight, and from here on out, I guess, Eric Devlin, reporter from the Mercury, has moved on to another job, so Eric won't be reporting anymore from the Mercury, we don't know who the new reporter is, but I want to publicly thank Eric for covering our district above and beyond where he had to. I mean, Eric did a lot of extra stories on Springfield, and really took a liking to the district, so if you do see Eric around town, tell him how much we miss him, so thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Joe, do you want to announce the executive session after the...
Oh, yeah, sorry, there's an executive session after the meeting, deal with personnel.
Motion to adjourn.
So second? All those in favor? Aye, meeting adjourned.